Good evening. We are now live.
Thank you, Ms. Niola. Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, June 25th Evening Board Meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Board Clerk Ms. Niola, could you please make the announcement and take the role, please?
Yes. The Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, also serving as the governing body for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts, is now meeting in regular session, January 25, 2022. Commissioner Phi?
Here.
Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Vice Chair Willie?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda, I would just like to express a word of thanks to the hundreds of people and employees of Washington County and Clean Water Services who shared their condolences with me on the recent death of my brother. I was able to travel back to New Hampshire last Wednesday and returned last night after attending his funeral services and to some of his personal matters. I will miss him, and I want you to know that all of your sincere thoughts were very meaningful to me. Thank you very much. So let's start first, oh, with a couple of announcements. Item C5, that's the last item on our consent agenda. The Board has asked that we move that to the action section of the agenda, so we'll have two action items. Additionally, since the board packet was first published, item F1 has been revised and includes a presentation. So there will be a presentation provided as part of the staff report in advance of that public hearing. Those are the two agenda changes that I'm aware of. So Ms. Niola, who do we have signed up?
Before we move on, just for viewers of the public, item C5 that is moving to action will have a staff presentation that is not currently in the published agenda, but Clerk Niola will update that after tonight's meeting.
Thank you. So, public comment. This is the first public comment period, which is limited to two minutes per individual. Do we have some folks signed up or wanting to share their thoughts with us tonight?
Yes, we have Martita who signed up to speak. Martita?
Hi there. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So I found out last week that Ridwell will no longer be servicing those of us in Washington County because the county has asked Ridwell to cease and desist pickups. I just want you to know that for me, this has been an extraordinary service. It is something that I have been thrilled about because for all that Oregon wants to do the right thing, there is so much that we cannot recycle today from our current services. Knowing that I could properly dispose of batteries and plastic film alone was an absolute relief to me. Ridwell also picks up clamshells, all PETE1 clear material, styrofoam, and light bulbs. I would ask that Washington County consider making Ridwell part of the solution. They should be given the opportunity to present their own proposal to be a permanent service, potentially to the residents of Washington County. The biggest limitation with large waste management haulers is real. All of the recycling has to go into one bin, and that can become a contamination issue. Because Ridwell makes us do the separation and hand them in pre-bags that we do ahead of time, they avoid a lot of these issues. There are a lot of limitations to how big bulk waste management can do the work that makes it hard for them to do some of this recycling. So I ask that we go pro-green business and give Ridwell the opportunity to be part of the solution. The truth is, they may not be able to, but I think we should offer them a seat at the table. We want a county that is looking forward into the future and not having his hands tied by a business monopoly that's already in place. Let's not go with the status quo and don't let perfect be the enemy of the good. Thank you.
And it looks like Julia Palmer has her hand up, so I'll assume that she wants to speak at the beginning. Julia, can you unmute?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Julia Palmer, and I live in the unincorporated Washington County area. I completed my master recycler training about three years ago. I've listened to the YouTube videos of the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee since the June 2021, and that focused on the vendor who's picking up hard-to-recycle items in Washington County. According to the Code 8.08.130, the purpose of the advisory committee is to provide the Board with recommendations on solid waste-related decisions from community members. And according to the code, the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee duties to the Commissioners start with a review and advice on proposed changes to the rules and regulations that affect the safe and sanitary accumulation of collection, transportation, storage, and disposal of waste. At the June 10, 2021, Garbage and Recycling Advisor Committee meeting, there was public hearings, and there were a lot of comments about how this particular vendor and James Neighborhood Recycling were innovative. There were also questions from the public about why the franchise-sized haulers had not come up with this idea about recycling hard-to-recycle materials first. At the December 9, 2021, Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee meeting, Mr. Eggleston showed a slide that listed the regulatory approaches from fully regulated to lightly regulated. "Anything less than the fully regulated would have required a code change," he said. The Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee could have made the recommendation to the Commissioners to modify the code. From listening to the discussions, it sounded like nearly half the Garbage and Recycling Advisory Committee were in favor of something less than fully regulated, but they did not make a consensus decision. The current fully regulated code is focused on curbside recycling.
Julia, I'm sorry, you've gone over your two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Hattie. Hattie, can you please unmute?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hey, I spoke in December's meeting regarding ordinance 881, specifically the 185th extension. I just want to take this opportunity to express my appreciation and gratitude to you all for listening to the objections from the public and taking everything into consideration prior to, you know, your postponed vote tonight. That's all. I just wanted to say thank you guys very much.
Good. Hattie, can we have you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Hattie Elmancy, E-L-M-A-N-S-Y.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. I see no hands.
Thank you, Board Clerk, and I would urge our community members to please stay tuned for later in this evening's meeting or come back to the saved video for item C5, which we will have a staff report on as part of the action section of the agenda. So, thank you. All right, Commissioners, we have a modified consent agenda consisting of four items. The first is from Clean Water Services, then two from Housing, and one from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission? We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers, a second from Vice Chair Willie. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Next, we'll move to proclamations. And I'd like to welcome our Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer, Latricia Tillman. And we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Latricia Tillman, and I'm the Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer for Washington County. It's a pleasure to see you all today. And I'm pleased to offer a few introductory remarks on our cultural heritage celebrations before I turn it over to Kimmy Nord, who's an engineer in Land Use and Transportation and the co-chair of the Black History Month Planning Committee. And Ms. Nord will introduce some of our community's wonderful Black health and wellness professionals who will read the proclamation. So as a reminder, Washington County Cultural Heritage Celebrations and Resource Pages are a starting point for collective organizational engagement and learning about equity, diversity, and inclusion. And we are so thankful for the Black History Month celebrations that we will enjoy coming up in February, which have been planned and organized by about 20 staff who volunteered to support our learning in addition to their official work, and they're doing it also in partnership with staff from the city of Hillsborough and Clean Water Services. So we're excited about that collaboration. These celebrations offer an opportunity to enter into relationship with staff and community who identify as Black, African, and/or African-American to build trust and deepen our understanding of the diverse and growing communities in Washington County. And the celebrations also create an opportunity to learn about historic and present oppression of the Black community and the community's resilience in the face of that oppression. And that gives us an opportunity to reflect on whether or not our current policies or sentiments support the well-being of the Black community and whether or not we are actively working to dismantle racism and white supremacy. So recognizing great diversity within our Black, African, and African-American communities. We are not speaking fully to all the diversity of experiences within that community. Some immigrated to the United States freely, and there were some who were forcibly removed from their homelands under the bonds of slavery and descendants of those individuals. Consequently, our efforts do not present a comprehensive exhaustive picture of the nuances or full range of opinions within any culture or subculture. But we do appreciate the thoughtfulness of our committee and the ways that they're curating opportunities for us in Washington County and our partner jurisdictions to learn. If there are questions about what's presented or not presented, people are absolutely welcome to reach out to us at the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement or to any one of the members of the planning committee. And with that, I just want to extend again my appreciation for the committee who met over the past few weeks to bring this to you and the leadership of the co-chairs, Kimmy Nord from, as I mentioned, Land Use and Transportation, and Breonna Jackson from Human Resources. So with that, I will turn it over to Kimmy, who will introduce Dr. Renee George, Dr. Nadia English-Williams, Adibola Adewumi, and Alicia Kelly to read the proclamation. And then following that, Breonna Jackson will provide some closing remarks. So thank you so much. And Kimmy, you can take it away.
Thank you, Latricia. As she said, my name is Kimmy Nord, and I'd like to introduce our readers of the proclamation. Dr. Renee George is a naturopathic physician and licensed midwife at Canyon Medical Center who specializes in family medicine. She is a native of the United States Virgin Islands and has been living in Oregon for the last nine years. Dr. Nadia English-Williams is a passionate naturopathic physician and midwife at Canyon Medical Center. In addition, Dr. English-Williams is a PhD candidate at Oregon State University in Applied Medical Anthropology. Her research is focused on maternity care and health outcomes. Adibola Adewumi is the owner of both Gym Guys In Home and Mobile Personal Training Company and Rush Bulls Healthy Fast Casual Restaurant. He holds a joint Masters in Engineering and Business and previously worked at Intel for 14 years. He left there to pursue his passion of helping people change their lives through health and fitness and is the winner of the National Gym Guys Comeback Award for 2021. And last, Alicia Kelly is a licensed clinical social worker in the state of Oregon and Texas. She is an Oregon native whose mission is to normalize Black mental health therapy in Oregon and make it a natural part of everyday living. She has been known to call herself "the therapist with a therapist" because she believes in mental health wellness for all. And with that, I'll turn it over to our presenters, starting with Dr. Renee George, to read the proclamation. So go ahead and unmute yourselves as you read.
Proclamation. Board of Commissioners for Washington County, a proclamation in honor of Black History Month 2022. Whereas the Washington County Board of Commissioners takes pride in recognizing February 2022 as Black History Month, celebrating the many notable contributions that people of African descent have made to our country. And whereas we acknowledge that we have never fully lived up to the founding ideals of this country of all people being created equal, and whereas we celebrate the diversity of Black people in Washington County, Oregon, our nation, and the Black diaspora, whether they self-identify as African, African-American, Afro-Latino, Afro-Caribbean, or Black. And whereas we recognize this year's Black History Month theme of Black health and wellness, and whereas we acknowledge systemic racism has led to African-Americans being more likely to die at an early age from all causes, more commonly misdiagnosed and impacted by health inequities throughout the healthcare system that have traumatized the Black community, and whereas we now celebrate Black health and wellness, including the legacy of Black scholars, midwives, nurses, doctors, practitioners of not only Western medicine, but all the other indigenous ways of promoting health and healing throughout the Black diaspora, and...
Whereas we uplift our community leaders, Black business owners, professionals, and others who promote well-being and knowledge throughout the many facets of the Black community as part of our whole inclusive community. And whereas each Black individual has a unique mind, body, and soul, which deserves to be healthy, well, and treated with respect and empathy. And whereas recently deplorable events have re-elevated the mandate of the Black struggle and underscored the need for more than raised voices to bring about the lasting institutional and societal change that is desperately needed in our country, and...
Whereas we encourage all people to recognize and confront their issues by standing in the gap at every opportunity and eliminating barriers with fearlessness and determination to empower Black people to promote and protect their health and wellness. And whereas today we celebrate and affirm the importance of Black health and wellness to our community throughout our state and the nation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim February 1 through February 28, 2022 as Black History Month, and calls upon the people of Washington County to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and reflection, and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, equitable, and prosperous for all.
Thank you to all who presented tonight. My name is Breonna Jackson, and I'm honored to serve as co-chair of the Black History Month Committee with Kimmy Nord. As the Learning and Development Program Manager for Washington County, my work is focused on fostering what I call a culture of continuous learning for our county employees. I see our acknowledgement of Black History Month as an extension of the greater learning and development work. This time of celebration prompts me to share a quote by Marcus Garvey. "The black skin is not a badge of shame, but rather a glorious symbol of national greatness." My charge to us all through the month of February and always is to hold this quote close to remind us of its truth, whether through the learning experiences and promotions the Black History Month Committee has curated or by our everyday encounters with Black inventions around our homes like hairbrushes, doorknobs, dustpans, and clothes dryers, things to keep us safe like traffic signals, home security systems and fire extinguishers, or things that we likely cannot live without like cellular phones, colored computer monitors, and automatic gear shifts. My hope is that we will all come to enjoy the rich history of Black culture with a profound sense of gratitude, appreciation, and reverence because not only is Black history American history, we are all living Black history each and every day. Thank you. With that, I would like to yield the floor back to Latricia.
Again, with so much appreciation to the Black History Month Committee and especially our collaboration with the city of Hillsborough and Clean Water Services, I actually would love to turn it right back over to the Board and to you, Madam Chair, for your consideration of the proclamation that has been read.
Well, Commissioners, we've had the wonderful opportunity of hearing from representatives of the community that we serve and to have them bring to life this proclamation. Are there any of you who wish to make any comments in advance of my asking for a motion to adopt the proclamation? Vice Chair Willie, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to Latricia for making this proclamation even more important to me and real because you had all of these participants read a part of it, and that's exactly what I think we should be doing with our proclamations. So thank you all for being a part of this proclamation in our meeting tonight, and you did a great job. So thank you, Latricia, for doing that.
Commissioner Phi?
Thank you, Chair. And can you hear me? Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for your, the reading of the proclamation. I did everything Commissioner Willie said, and I'm just so proud of you all. The work you put in is showed. And this is my second Black History Month proclamation, so I'm really proud and I'm on this journey with you all. So, thank you. Great job.
Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Well, again, I ditto what Commissioner Willie said, what Commissioner Phi said. It is wonderful to see community members engaged as well as our employees, and that's... The employees and the groups within our structure have done a great job, but just in reaching out to the community, I think that that's a wonderful addition. And I just want to give a shout out to the Canyon Medical Center. It's close to me, in my district, and thank you for the work that you do.
Commissioner Rogers, anything you'd like to share?
Pam, that was blatant. Boy, that was good advertising. No, ditto to everything. That was great. It's always nice to see people participate. And being last doesn't mean that I have anything new to add other than I, Madam Chair, would move forward with the proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. And before I ask for a second, I will add my comments. Thank you to each of you. I am grateful for you for your being part of this community. And I also thank you for helping me be a better ally in serving you and our broader community. I appreciate it. So we have a motion from Commissioner Rogers. We have a second from Commissioner Treese. All those in favor of adopting this Black History Month proclamation, please raise your hand.
We didn't.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Thank you again for joining us and sharing of your time this evening, and thank you to the committee. We look forward to all of the activities that we'll have available to us throughout the month of February. Well, after that beautiful proclamation, we'll move to presentations. Ms. Latricia Tillman is here with the Quarterly Report for the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. Ms. Tillman, wow, my screen just did all kinds of hops and bumps. There we go. Thank you. Mine too. Thank you so much again, Chair Harrington, for the opportunity to provide you and the Board with the quarterly update, which is part of the equity resolution that you passed in 2020. So coming up on two years of the benefit of that leadership from you and the Board. What's really exciting to me about this presentation this evening is that this is the first cycle around the sun that we have made in terms of our quarterly reports. So this is our fourth quarterly report. And you'll see in the ways that we've been reporting out that we're now moving, transitioning from providing quarterly updates to now being able to provide more annual updates in terms of the data that we're paying attention to in our work related to equity, diversity, and inclusion. And I just want to note that I am joined this evening by Amanda Garcia, now our Community Engagement Manager, and she'll be sharing updates specific to the work of the Community Engagement Team. So next slide. There are some slides that are going to be repetitive. I try to build them into the quarterly report because I think it's so important to just remind ourselves of the context that we're operating within. And as I have said multiple times, to achieve equity in outcomes that we're trying to achieve as a county, we have to be familiar with the roots and the causes of inequity. And so we need to center ourselves within the long arc of history. And as we enter into Black History Month, it is important to reflect on the fact that Black history is actually human history. It is our collective history, and it predates the notion of nation, race, and tribe. The myth of white supremacy that we are operating under and working to dismantle is actually a relatively new concept when we look at history with this kind of expansive view that emerged in the 1400s after thousands and thousands of years without divisions based on race. And what's hopeful for me about thinking about history like this is that when we think about this, we can begin to envision a time when we look back on white supremacy in the same way we think about theories like the Earth being flat or at the center of the solar system. And together, we can dismantle it through our efforts to recognize the important diverse contributions of all cultures and start to think about equitable, sustainable practices more holistically. Next slide. So again, just wanting to ground ourselves as well in a change management curve. So here we are again stepping away. We're in the very early stages. Again, this is our fourth quarter, so we're one year in to talking about how we're implementing equity across all of our work, and we are moving away from a status quo, which has generally been more race-neutral. We don't tend to talk about racial equity or the implications of how different policies play out in different communities. And so again, we're learning new behaviors, learning new language, and trying new processes as a county, and that takes time, and it has impacts on our productivity and, you know, trying to do new things and learn new things and integrate that into the way that we operate. So it's going to take some time for it to feel normal. So if, you know, the questions that folks are asking, especially on the Board, are really important questions, and we want to share our appreciation that those get raised here and also in individual conversations because we're all on this learning journey together. The next slide actually gives us an opportunity to reflect on all the great things that have happened across the county over the past almost two years. Again, as I mentioned, we're almost two years away. Again, as, as I mentioned, we're almost two years away from the adoption of the Equity Resolution in February of 2020. And following the adoption, you all voted to fund the Office of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement and to combine it with the Community Engagement Team that already existed. I started in September 2020. Just today, I said I started in 2021, so it's COVID timeline. So it's really helpful to ground us in, in the fact and actual time. About a year ago, so February 2021, we launched the Equity Leadership Council, which was one of the pillars of the Equity Resolution. And the Equity Leadership Council Committee started soon after that in April. There are six of them, and we'll focus a little bit more on the work that they're grappling with. And then last August, you adopted the Equity Action Plan, Strategic Action Plan. And we also launched an Advisory Council to help think about how to co-create the Advisory Council on Racial Equity. So that notion of co-creation and partnership with community is something that we've been really leaning into. This fall, we launched the Budget Equity Tool. We'll talk a little bit more about that. But that is a really significant example of how we're leaning into the Equity Resolution that talks about equity in all of the county's policies, programs and practices. And we anticipate, looking forward, that we'll be launching that Advisory Council on Racial Equity, which is external. It will be populated with community experts in areas of equity, diversity and inclusion across multiple disciplines. And we're really looking forward to bringing them into our equity journey in an intentional way. Next slide, please. So again, just want to share my personal philosophy for how to manage the change work that we're doing. The county has been, has had many champions for equity, diversity and inclusion. And so we're really building on that good work and trying to launch it into the sphere of great equity, diversity and inclusion work. And that really happens through three, in my mind, through three areas of focus: discipline people, discipline thought and discipline action. And so we'll share about how we've been staffing up, mention the structures that we're building, which really brings in more equity champions and deepens their capacity, knowledge base, both in the areas of equity, diversity and inclusion, but also how we apply it to our work across the county. Discipline thought is about how we look at our current practices and look at how we can turn what we're currently doing into best practices. So identifying the gaps between what is best practice and what are we doing now, what does the data say? And then discipline action is how we start to close those gaps between what we know we can or should be doing and honing in on where the data shows that we have gaps in access and outcomes of our services. Next slide. So here I'm gonna pivot and turn it over to Amanda Garcia Snell to do a little bit of a deeper dive around our community engagement activities, which is also about engaging broader and broader groups of people into the work that we do as a county to help inform our work and make sure that it's responsive to our diverse Washington County community. Amanda.
Thanks, Latricia. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. As Latricia mentioned, I'm Amanda Garcia Snell, Community Engagement Manager. And I'm here to just provide a few, some of the community engagement portion of this quarterly update. Next slide, please. So hopefully this graphic is familiar to you. It's intended to illustrate the many touchpoints that exist for community to provide input to you all and the county as an organization. While I won't read all of these, I do want to highlight that in addition to our formal boards and commissions and informal work groups, we also have internal work groups like the Cultural Heritage Celebration Groups, like the Black History Month Committee that you just heard from some of those folks today. And those, those cultural heritage celebration committees, they really provide opportunities for us to identify and connect with community partners and grow those relationships. We're able to bring, make opportunities for community to interface with you all in reading proclamations or presentations, sharing presentations or remarks. And we really use these opportunities as a tool for deeper engagement and, and occasionally and potentially policy change, as we saw with Juneteenth and with the land acknowledgement. And so they are one piece of our work, but just one that we don't, that we haven't really talked about much in the past. Next slide, please. So this slide is similar to previous information that I'd shared in the past, but it's a little different arrangement, and it shows annual participation in CPO meetings and board engagement events. So the blue bars are the CPO meetings and the orange bars are the board engagement, engagement events in which the, the community engagement program was involved. So the numbers and the, each little section here represents a year, so 2018, 2019, 2020 and 2021. The numbers at the top are the numbers of events themselves. And then at the bottom in smaller type, you can see the total number of participants in a year. So in some instances, you'll notice the blue bar for 2021, it has a smaller number at the top than other years, but it's a higher bar, and that's because there were fewer events, but more people participating in them overall. And next slide, please. So as you recall, we've been working on demographic data improvement for boards and commissions. And I am very excited to report that we have had significant improvement in this particular area. Prior to 2021, only 13% of applicants provided demographic data. And now we're up to an average of 90.4% of applicants provide demographic data. So that's really helpful in, in, you know, bringing appointments to you all and thinking about the diversity of our boards and commissions in general. Next slide, please. So this is an annual version of a table that I typically show with quarterly comparisons. And this is more of an annual comparison, so pre-2021 and then 2021. You can see in 2021, primarily because we had so many more people providing demographic data, we had good distribution across age categories, even people born in the 1990s, which I think is very exciting to have participation from younger people in our boards and commissions. And then we also see representation across racial and ethnic categories. Of course, there's still a lot of work to do to encourage people to share their demographic data. You can see that we didn't have as many people sharing data in some of those categories. But we really, that data is so important, excuse me, so important to us because of how we can see how our representation on boards and commissions reflects the county demographics. Next slide. So we are continuing to work on foundational changes, or what I call foundational changes, such as the CPO revisioning that I brought to you in December and our planned efforts there to align that work with other countywide engagement work. And then also boards and commissions is a primary focus of our work. And so still working to increase the diversity and support inclusion. We're also starting to work on a compensation policy so that we can compensate our community members for their contributions of time and experience and expertise that they provide to our work. It helps us serve the community better. We're also starting our work on land acknowledgement implementation plan, which I also shared with you a few meetings ago. I want to say this is December, but I guess it was January, earlier January. But really starting to pull together staff across the organization, boards and commissions related staff, and then fully intend to engage staff from the whole organization so that we can really be thoughtful in developing a plan that, that works for people and is meaningful. Next slide. So for civic leaders, we've had 122 unique graduates to date. You'll see the number of people who completed each, for each year, who completed the cohorts for each year are that larger number in each of those arrows. If you add those up, you'll see that it comes to 144, not 122. And that's because in the, the first virtual cohort that we offered at the beginning, in the early days of the pandemic, was only offered to alumni, not new participants, because we were new to, to providing virtual engagement. So was Adalante Muñoz, our partner in this work. And we really didn't know how people would respond to that. And so we really wanted to only offer that to people who were familiar with the project and, you know, some of the expectations. We did a deeper dive for that first cohort, for that first virtual cohort. Since then, our team and Adalante are old hands at virtual engagement. And so all of the cohorts since that cohort in 2020 that have been virtual. We plan to launch the RFPQ for additional civic leadership trainers in February. And some examples of programming changes that we'll be looking for, which is largely based on the extensive data that, that we have garnered from Adalante's evaluations of these programs from participants and other community, is to offer things like shorter bootcamp-style sessions or, or sessions focused on specific topics like public safety or budget or boards and commissions. Those are all areas where people have expressed a lot of interest, learning more about how to engage with the county and government in general around some of those areas. Next slide. So the last thing that I want to share with you is our weekly e-update or electronic update that we launched last October. It's a weekly digital communication that's really geared towards community-based organizations so that they can share opportunities with their networks and with the people that they serve. We include county opportunities and also those that other organizations and jurisdictions share with us. We're really trying to focus on opportunities for people to impact decision-making that may affect them. But sometimes we put in other emergent information. Our last week issue included some information on COVID tests, things like that, that it would be helpful to share in multiple ways. If you would like to receive it, and I know that, that some of you are, but if you would like to receive it and you're not, let me know and we're happy to sign you up. It's a constant contact opportunities. You can share it with other people. They can subscribe as well. And that is all from my community engagement portion, much shorter than, than typically, but one slice of the pie for the work that we're doing, and I will hand it back over to Latricia.
Thanks, Amanda, and thanks to the Community Engagement Team for the great work that is happening. And it's just been wonderful to see how that quality just continues to increase over time. So it's very exciting work. So I'm gonna pivot now to equity, diversity and inclusion. And so the next slide is just a reminder of the structure within the internal focused Equity Leadership Council. Again, it's focused on development and implementation of our equity, diversity and inclusion strategies, standards, policies and tools. And it's based on both best equity, diversity and inclusion practices, as well as emerging best practices. It's a fairly young field, and so some of the work we're basing off of other jurisdictions, and some of it's fairly novel, and we're learning as we go. But since we are now approaching the one year of the launch of our, the council and our committees, and we've had a structure change with Design the Future and the, now the new structure with the Assistant County Administrators. We are looking at how we can update the charter for the Equity Leadership Council and also thinking about how we adjust the meeting cadence for the committees within the Equity Leadership Council. The committees, as you'll recall, there are six of them focused on the major pillars, I believe, of robust equity, diversity and inclusion practice within government jurisdiction. So the committees are focused on civil rights compliance, diversity and inclusion within our boards and committees, diversity and inclusion of our employee base and our suppliers and contractors, equity, diversity and inclusion training, and then building out robust capacity for integrating and utilizing data with an equity lens, as well as building out equity policy. The next slide is a highlight of some of the forthcoming policy work. And we're currently working out what policy work can be adopted and implemented internal to the county administrative office and structure and what policy will be coming forward to the board. So more on that, but the major pieces of policy work that we're really excited about coming forward is adoption of Employee Resource Group Permissive Policy. So that would allow employees who are underrepresented within our workforce to self-organize and be a support, not only for the employee base, but also help inform organizational policy and practice to make our workforce, our workplace more welcoming and improve our retention of diversity. So it's not enough just to recruit diversity in our workforce. We really need to think about what it's going to take to retain a diverse workforce as well. And we'll also be updating the bilingual pay policy. And that's the compensation benefit that exists currently for employees who utilize their bilingual skills. As Amanda mentioned, we'll be bringing forward an equitable community engagement policy, and that aligns not just with the work of the boards and commissions, but also all the various ways that we are doing community engagement. Like you all heard earlier today, the work happening with MISTAP and community engagement there, as well as with all the community engagement efforts that you'll be hearing about around ARPA investments. We are, as I mentioned, launching the Budget Equity Tool. I'll speak a little bit more to that in a minute. And then what we're looking forward to going forward is applying the learnings from the utilization of a budget equity tool to legislative equity tool. So this will align with statewide efforts to build equity analysis into legislation. And it will exist as a support to you as a board, as you consider your legislative agenda going forward and also for staff, as staff are developing legislative concepts for consideration, as well as tracking or responding to legislation moving forward at the state and federal level. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to spend a minute to talk a little bit about the work of establishing a new equity tool within a countywide process. So you all are very well aware that the budget is the county's annual significant policy document. And it's, there are many hands that contribute to the budget that you ultimately adopt. And so we're building in the consideration of equity throughout the budget building process. And the creation of the Budget Equity Tool was led by our Equity Policy Manager, Ashley Horn, built off of other jurisdictions who have been utilizing a budget equity tool and then vetted, refined by our Equity Policy Committee of the Equity Leadership Council. And then once we had a tool, then we needed to lean into staff training. And we offered three staff trainings, so all, all budget folks who've touched the budget have been trained in the Budget Equity Tool. And then we've been doing Q and A sessions and individual consults. So it's a lot of time. It's a really significant effort. And we are looking forward to learning from this first time through the process. So it's very much about a learning journey and seeing how the various org units within various departments apply the Budget Equity Tool. So we're excited to deploy this as a baseline learning opportunity to see how departments are already investing in equity and identifying the ways that they can contribute and, and continue to invest and build out their equity approaches through ongoing budget development. And then we will also, as the budget cycle goes forward, we will be bringing we will be bringing the Budget Equity Tool Training to you as well as the budget committees. Because as you'll recall, the genesis of all of this came from the budget committees last year asking, how do we embed equity into our budgetary deliberations? So that that will come back around to the committees and you will have the opportunity to also consider equity using the same budget equity tool as you deliberate and move forward to the final adoption of the county's budget for fiscal year 2223. And then we will continue to learn and refine that tool going forward. Next slide, please. I'm going to, I just want to take a breath there because it is so much work. And we're so appreciative of all the hands that have been a part of that that effort. And as we move forward, some of the other areas that we'll be looking into will be an equity data assessment, which is an area that you all approved funding for through the American Recovery Plan Act funds that came to Washington County. And we're hoping that that assess assessment will launch before the end of this fiscal year, so late spring. But that is a significant assessment of our data systems and infrastructure, looking at how we collect demographic data and then how we can utilize that demographic data to start developing snapshots of where we can see inequity in our systems, both in access to services, quality of services and outcomes. So very excited about that. And then we'll be launching an equity, diversity and inclusion request for qualified trainers because there's so much interest and desire for equity training going forward. And the next slide, please. We just wanted to appreciate the various community partners who helped us think through the Advisory Council for Racial Equity, which you'll be hearing more about later this spring. And wanted to just focus in on the importance of that co-creation and bring community partners who have not just deep expertise in equity, but also they've been engaged in many, many advisory committees to help us frame the conversation, questions, priorities and structure for that advisory council. So you'll hear more about that in the months to come. Right, next slide. Okay, so I wanted to just spend a little bit of time because I know this is also a significant priority for the board. Procurement equity is something that we have been really appreciative of having Kitty Kong focus on within our team. And these are some of the data points that we've been tracking. And that is the number of contracts that we have entered into and compare it to the number of contracts that we have entered into with COVID suppliers. One of the challenges that we are identifying as we continue to focus in on metrics and outcomes as it relates to supplier diversity is that we have a system that is not as nimble or as comprehensive as we would like as it relates to being able to track our COVID suppliers. So one challenge is that our nonprofits that we do quite a lot of contracting with for service delivery, they are not considered COVID suppliers, so they're not tracked. And we may be doing business with suppliers that are either small or women owned or minority owned. But if they're not certified, they're not captured. And then some of these may have been certified as COVID suppliers at one point, but aren't anymore. And so they're just a number of moving parts and pieces to track. But we're continuing to hone in on the best and most useful way to be able to report out on that progress that we're making towards supplier diversity. Next slide, please. This is one of the ways that we're trying to track the effectiveness. So it's not just the amount of suppliers that we have in our system, but it's also the number of contracts and the percentage of dollars that we're seeing moving out into the supplier diversity community as well as what does that dollar amount represent as a percentage of our spend? So back in July, we shared that our spend on COVID suppliers was about 3% of our overall budget. But as more of our budget has rolled out into the community of suppliers, we see that percentage of spend go down even though the number of dollars moving out to COVID suppliers is going up. Next slide, please. So we are building out a system that ecosystem that will be more supportive of procurement equity. And we appreciate that you, I believe, just last week adopted set of procurement rule updates that include a significant focus on supplier diversity. So we'll be taking those rule updates and creating more training and information for individuals across the county who are doing contracting and procurement in to support that work and reinforce that work. I want to appreciate you for the work that you did in November to adopt the Construction Career Pathways Project in partner and our partners at Metro who from whom we learned quite a lot. And then a lot of our focus going forward in terms of that relationship building is supplier diversity focused community engagement. So this means establishing memberships with certain organizations like Oami, the Oregon Association of Minority Entrepreneurs and participating in their virtual trade show as well as networking with the Certification Office for Business Inclusion and Diversity, which is the state certification for supplier diversity. Next slide, please. So this is another way that we're wanting to represent and track supplier diversity. So this is a little bit more granular at this point because we haven't gone all the way around a year of tracking supplier diversity since Kitty joined us midway through the year. And once we get through a year of kind of tracking it more closely, hopefully we'll have a better sense of the metrics that will be helpful going forward. Again, this is just one, you can see that OpenGov, which used to be procure now, that's our solicitation site for suppliers. And we're trying to get more vendors get registered and helping support them with that and sharing solicitations. So we have 222 new suppliers that have registered since July 1st. There's now almost 1,000 total suppliers registered on OpenGov. And of that, about just shy of 300 are certified minority women and emerging small businesses. And you can see in this pie chart, they break it out. So you can see how many small businesses that's in green and how many minority businesses, et cetera, et cetera, with a level of granularity that I haven't seen before. So it's nice to see that we're tracking LGBTQ owned businesses, Native American owned businesses, veteran owned businesses, et cetera. And then there are several nonprofits that are also registered within OpenGov as well. So we'll be continuing to track and refine that as we move forward. Next slide, please. So as I pivot toward closing, I wanted to really take some time out to just share the appreciation that we have as the Office of Equity, Inclusion and Community Engagement for some of the really important partnerships that we've been able to develop over the past year. We're very excited to be working with HR, our human resources team. They're also in a significant change process and we're happy to walk forward with them. In the process, we are working with the talent acquisition team to launch a bid process to support their learning of diversity and inclusion best practices, looking at their whole talent acquisition process to build out best practice strategy for that team. As I mentioned before, we're going to be launching Equity, Diversity and Training Request for Qualified Trainers. We're doing that in partnership with Brianna Jackson, Learning and Development Manager, who you heard from earlier this evening. We're in day 14 or 15 of our 21 day racial equity habit building challenge, which began. The genesis of that was a way to think about how we can support employees who are isolating or quarantining at home as a result of COVID. So that idea, the genesis came out of a partnership conversation with HR. And then we're also working with the HR business partner, senior business partners around improving our policy and procedure as it relates to assuring a discrimination and harassment free workplace. So we're very excited about that. Next slide, please. And I know you've heard from the sheriff, as you've talked about the ESPD levy about our partnership with the sheriff's office. But I also wanted to highlight that we partnered with the sheriff's office to complete a discrimination and harassment free workplace policy, all staff training. We trained, or not we, Sean Hartfield, our Civil Rights Coordinator, trained all of the sheriff's office staff, mostly in person using COVID safe protocols, but recognizing that that the sheriff's operation is a 24/7 operation that required a lot of creative scheduling. And we very much appreciated the partnership. And I know Sean very much appreciated seeing the sheriff and senior leaders from the sheriff's office also in that training. We've been working with Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Trainers within the sheriff's office to help them move their training forward. And then we've been partnering with the our HR team as well as the some senior leaders within the sheriff's office to help build out equity, diversity and inclusion assessments in the sheriff's office hiring and promotion processes. So quite a bit of work. The next slide, just want to highlight again, as you heard today, the partnership with land use and transportation, helping to build out equitable community engagement and equity metrics in the major transportation efforts that are and middle housing efforts that are being led through land use and transportation. And then also appreciating them for really being the genesis of our in the planning commission for being the genesis of our land acknowledgement resolution and order. It was probably always in the plan, but the expedited timeline definitely came out of the leadership of individuals within the planning commission. So we appreciate that community leadership. In housing, as you know, we have two staff who are supervised within the Office of Equity and Inclusion and Community Engagement, but work 100% on supportive housing services. Ty Schweferman and Janine Smith, you've met both of them in some of the presentations to the board. And our partnership with them has included making sure that equity is a component of shelter siting and community engagement and as well as provider engagement for supportive housing services. And then we continue to work with the Latino Policy Council to think about how we can mitigate some of the impacts of the citing of the bridge shelter on Caedius. And we'll have more to report out on that in the coming months. But it's been quite a wonderful partnership with the Latino Policy Council and the city of Hillsborough and really kind of building out this multi jurisdictional and community based partnership approach. Next slide, and this is my last slide, and then I'll turn it over to you for any questions or comments. Wanting to acknowledge how much work has happened over the past year and a half that I've been here and two years since the equity resolution as it relates to COVID. And knowing that the county has always had a value and priority of centering equity and thinking about the inequitable impacts of COVID on our community. So looking forward, we're really excited to think about how we continue to support the county, but also other jurisdictions and think in centering equity in the ways that we allocate the ARPA funding. One of the major ways that it's nice to work with Amanda and also in partnership with the city of Hillsborough and the city of Beaverton, as well as our internal ARPA team to focus on how do we engage regionally with culturally specific community partners to help inform both our tranche one implementation of our investments and also thinking about how we make our tranche two investments. And so the partners that we've engaged, as I mentioned, city of Hillsborough, city of Beaverton, we're working internally with our economic development lead, Matt Craigie. And he's kind of bridging that conversation to the other jurisdictions, economic development leaders, really enjoying the partnership with public health. You'll hear more about that. And then really lifting up and centering the COVID racial equity advisory group, which grew out of public health investment in culturally specific service delivery, but created a forum where there was an opportunity for more two direction conversation about how we as a county can be more responsive to community needs. So we will be talking with the board more regarding ARPA and community engagement coming up on February 1st. So we're looking forward to that conversation. So clearly, a lot of work has happened over this past year. And as we continue to build out the foundation on equity, we're also wanting to be more thoughtful about the cadence of the work that we take on, both because we are moving through a significant change process and that that change process is happening concurrently with a very persistent global pandemic. So really, again, wanting to center the health and the wellness of our workforce as as well as we center on equitable outcomes for our community. So with that, I'll stop and open it up to you for questions and any feedback you have for us.
Commissioners, questions and comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Well, Latricia, you were right. That was, that was a lot of information and you and Amanda did a great job. So kudos to that. Things that kind of piqued my interest that that I will do a little bit more homework and then circle back with you on is I need to have a better understanding of what the budget equity tool really looks like and what where we're going with all of that. So I'll be talking to you about that. Amanda, I'm looking forward to my CPOs getting fired back up again. So let's try and and get that going, I guess, out in my district. But overall, I was really impressed, not only just with the overall presentation, but the data that you've been able to gather. I mean, Latricia, you and I talked about early on the importance of finding a data analyst that would be able to be able to compile some of this information and and extract it, I guess, from all of the from all of the bowels of what the county's been doing for years and not doing. And and it looks like you've got a great start on that. So so thank you for doing that. It's hard to compare. I know it's hard to compare. We look at, you looked at that one percentage where we were 2.93% or something on one. And then later we were significantly lower. Those are hard comparisons to make. Those are hard comparisons to make. We'll have to have a little bit longer runway to really come up with that, but it is, it's a great start. So wow, I'm, thank you for all your hard work that not only do you do every day, but putting together this presentation. So great job, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And we could not do it without the whole team. So we really appreciate them. We have the easy job of reporting it out to you and they they grinded out every day.
Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
All I can say is wow. It's just, it's stunning the amount of work that's been done and the degree to which, you know, I I look back to our discussions around the resolution and all the meetings that we had to to really solidify our our thoughts around the resolution. And here it is, live and in person. You know, and that's, that's, that's my response is, you know, I I I I just appreciate it. I appreciate all the work that you've done, Latricia, all the work that the staff has done. And I know that there's lots more to do. I understand that. But like I said, I'm just gonna say, wow.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Well, seeing no other commissioner comments, I'll close with what a tremendous foundation that has been built here. Significant foundation over these last two years since we adopted the equity resolution. It's really a new day here at Washington County and a needed one as our census twenty-twenty information reflects the ever-changing face of the Washington County community. And since we are a service providing agency, we are on the necessary, yet powerful journey to succeed as an exemplary organization to serve our diverse community and to foster the careers of a more diverse workforce that reflects our community. So I am grateful for the commitment of our board over these last two years to act on that equity resolution, to invest in ourselves as well as in our community. And together, we will have brighter days ahead. So thank you very much for this terrific presentation and keep up the great work.
Commissioner Harrington.
Thank you. Alrighty. Next, we will move on to public hearings. We have just one public hearing for this evening. And it is with regard to a proposed A engrossed ordinance. But first, we need a motion to read A engrossed ordinance number eight-eight-one by title only. We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers. Do we, we have a second from Vice Chair Willie. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr, could you do us the honors, please?
Of course, Chair Harrington. A engrossed ordinance number eight-eight-one, an ordinance amending the transportation system plan element of the comprehensive plan relating to general updates.
Terrific. Thank you. And I'll turn it over to the Director of Land Use and Transportation, Stephen Roberts, for a staff report before we have the public hearing. Take it away, Stephen.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, as noted, we're here for an engrossment hearing on ordinance eight-eight-one. This will be the first of two engrossment hearings. So we'll be back a week from now on February first. For the second hearing, at which point you can consider adoption of the ordinance. So with me tonight, I have Andy Back, our Planning and Development Services Manager, Aaron Wardell, Principal Transportation Planner. And to do the staff report, Steve Kelly, Senior Planner. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners. Again, I'm Steve Kelly, Transportation Planner with the department. And tonight, here to provide the staff report and with me to help answer any questions is Aaron Wardell. Tonight, you have before you the first of two required hearings for an engrossed ordinance. A engrossed ordinance number eight-eight-one is a transportation system plan update ordinance that reflects the recommendations of recently completed transportation studies. Next slide, please. So we'll have a brief staff report tonight to review the ordinance and provide the staff recommendation. Just a summary of the ordinance tonight. Next slide, please. The engrossed ordinance contains seven exhibits. These are organized by topic. The exhibits are, number one, the one hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue curves, the Grabhorn Road curves, the functional classification amendments to Tile Flat Road, Ice Age Drive alignment in Sherwood, TV Highway Regional Trail alignment, amendments related to the Salt Creek planning in Wilsonville. And finally, the design parameters table has been updated to allow for the enhanced bikeways envisioned in the TV Highway Regional Trail planning. Each of these was covered in detail in the staff report for the December seventh hearing. And I'm not going to repeat that information tonight. So with that, next slide, please. As I mentioned, your prior hearing on this ordinance was just a little over a month ago on December seventh. At that time, the board directed staff to engross the ordinance to remove the specific alignment of one hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue, which was previously exhibit two. The exhibits have been renumbered to reflect that change. Next slide, please. So our staff recommendation tonight is to conduct the public hearing and then continue the public hearing one week to February first, which point it would be up for your consideration for potential adoption. And with that, I'll be available to, Aaron and I are both available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to open a public hearing. Ms. Niola, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us at this public hearing?
We don't have anyone present that signed up, but if there's anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand. There's no one.
All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. At this juncture, I would like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to date certain February first, twenty-twenty-two, which is next week for the second public hearing and a potential adoption. Do we have such a motion? We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers. Do we have a second from Vice Chair Willie? All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously five to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our, the action section of our agenda. See you next week on that staff. The first item is to introduce and have the first reading of ordinance eight-eight-seven. Do we have a motion to read this ordinance by title only? We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers, a second from Vice Chair Willie. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr, could you please do us the honors?
Of course. Ordinance eight-eight-seven, an ordinance amending chapter eight point three-two of the Washington County Code to update code as recommended by EMS Alliance.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. And at this juncture, we will continue. Do I need to get a motion? Can't remember now, to continue this to a second reading and first public hearing on Tuesday, February fifteenth, so two weeks from now.
Never hurts to have a motion.
All right. Do we have such a motion? A motion from Commissioner Rogers, a second from Commissioner Treese. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Okay, terrific. Phew. Next, we'll move on to our added action item, which was formerly known as item C five. This is to approve temporary amendments to the solid waste and recycling administrative rules, particularly with regard to recycling collection from Ridwell. So I'd like to turn it over to Assistant County Administrator Marnie Kyle to take us through. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Board. Mostly what I want to do is to thank you for your commitment to recycling and reducing waste and just assure you that county staff and leadership share your goals and your passion for protecting our environment. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Agelston for a quick staff report and to address any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Marnie. Good evening, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here this evening. We're here this evening to discuss additional recycling services with you, specifically on January eighteenth last week. Staff attended a work session providing your board considerations for expanded recycling collection services. At that work session, your board directed staff to continue forward developing a program within the county's current solid waste regulatory framework and additionally allow for a temporary authorization for persons to offer similar services such as can be provided by, until such a time that those services can be provided by sanitary certificate holders. The requested action before you this evening is to approve the resolution and order, temporarily amending the solid waste and recycling administrative rules as set, as set forth in exhibit A of the resolution and order. Next slide, please. So a little refresher about the terms that get thrown around a lot in this conversation, recycling, recyclable, mixed recycling. Recycling is not just putting something in our curbside bins or taking it to a drop-off depot. Recycling is actually the process in which materials get transformed into new materials. And the definition of recycling includes taking that material and and changing the composition, grinding it down into pellets and making it a raw material for new products. We're not doing that by putting materials in our bin, but we are separating recyclable materials from other materials to to send to processors. We often get the question too about why are only certain materials included in the curbside recycling mix? I think it's really important to think about those considerations. Some of the things that the region looks at in terms of determining what is in the mix is that those materials have a strong end market. We want to be confident that there's always going to be a place to send those materials, that they are a responsible market. We want to make sure those materials can be sorted from other materials. That includes compatibility with equipment at our materials recovery facilities and making sure that the material can sort through that process successfully and be separated from other materials. We want to make sure that those those items don't impact our sorting equipment at our MERS. And the classic example there is plastic film or string lights or extension cords that wrap around the machinery and really damage the equipment. We want to also make sure it makes environmental sense. We're not recycling because we just like to recycle. We're recycling because it's good for the environment and we want to reap the environmental benefits of diverting those materials from the waste streams. And there's, there's some analysis that needs to be done to determine whether distant markets really do pencil out in terms of the environmental benefit. We also want to make sure there's enough material to sort for in our waste streams. We, markets require certain quantities of commodities, and if we can collect enough commodities to to justify a market opening up to our our system and to our opportunity, then we need to make sure we have that. And then finally, we also look at the ability of generators to separate and identify materials and separate them from other materials. Some specific requirements in relation to the types of plastics makes it really challenging to to identify what plastics are recyclable and what might not be. The image here on the screen also is kind of an example of looking at recyclable and mixed recycling. What's included in our mixed recycling bin is all recyclable, but all that is recyclable is not included in our mixed recycling bin. And this is really based on the the reasons we just outlined there. Next slide, please. Zooming in a little bit on some of these potential expanded recycling categories, we wanted to talk a little bit more about these specific items. Specifically, it's important, I think, to note the portion of the waste stream on the bottom. And then what are the current options available for these materials? Plastic film and bags is a material that often comes up. There's a lot of film in our waste stream. Film is, I think it's also important to know these portions of waste stream metrics are by weight. So some of these materials are light and take up a lot of space and volume. So they show up as a smaller percentage on weight composition studies, but they do constitute a larger volume of materials. Recycling, plastic film and bags make up about one point four seven of our waste percent of our waste stream. Those materials currently are collected at drop-off centers and grocery stores often. At the entryway of grocery stores have plastic bag drop-off spots that they'll accept any type of stretchy plastic films that can be sent off to recycling. Batteries is another material that's often talked about. Batteries are dangerous in the roll carts. They start fires in the MERS. They start fires in our collection vehicles. So we really want to keep them separate from our curbside mixed recycling and from the garbage. Batteries can be taken to a metro household hazardous waste event or facility and also at drop-off depots such as batteries plus bulbs. Light bulbs, very similar. In particular, the light bulb of concern is the compact fluorescent light bulb, often ends up in the waste stream and it contains small amounts of mercury. So we want to encourage folks to divert these materials from the waste any way we can. Responsible options are, again, metro household hazardous waste facilities, batteries plus bulbs and Home Depot and stores like that collect compact fluorescents from community members. Plastic number one clam shells is a very specific category. Not all clam shell containers, which are the plastic things that open like a clam shell. So it has a not-so-creative name, but they are becoming more ubiquitous in our waste stream. The quantities are increasing, I think, with the years as we see more of this product in our grocery store shelves. This composition data is a few years old and DQ is working to update that data in the next couple of years. So I would anticipate that the portion of the waste stream will go up in the new data update. There's currently no drop-off option for this material. There is a single market in El Paso, Texas, that is emerging that is starting to take these materials and they're very specifically focused on the number one PET plastic. And they don't have much tolerance for contamination from other types of plastics that are also available as clam shells. So it's a more challenging material to separate, but it is a material that has an outlet. Styrofoam is another material that is a burden on all of us when we buy a new toy and it comes with a block styrofoam and it fills up our entire garbage can and it doesn't, we can't get rid of it. And when you break it apart, it gets everywhere on in our garages. Styrofoam is a challenging product. It's very light and it's very bulky. The cost of transport, transporting styrofoam is exceedingly expensive. And one example is a forty-yard drop-off to styrofoam weighs somewhere around two hundred to three hundred pounds, which is basically driving air around in a giant drop box. There is an outlet that's local here. Agilix in Tigerd accepts expanded polystyrene, which is the chemical name for styrofoam. And that product is densified and Agilix currently is a chemical recycler that either reduces that material down to a polystyrene monomer or a plastics-to-fuel process to make crude oil fuel. Another product is textiles. Textiles do make up a pretty large portion of our waste stream. A little bit surprisingly, we see about three point six percent of our residential waste streams consisting of textiles. There's reuse and donation locations throughout the community. Goodwill is a great example of that. For an expanded recycling opportunity, there is a company in Portland that has been around for decades that makes rags out of old used textiles and it's more of a downcycling process, but it offers a second life for those materials. And I always try to highlight food here. Food is a really important component and it's a regional priority in our waste stream. Food makes up twenty-seven percent by weight of our waste in our residential garbage. We currently don't have any outlets. Staff are very interested in pursuing opportunities and with the expansion of the Nature's Needs Compost Facility in North Plains, we see that there may be some future opportunities for us in unincorporated to address this material as well. Next slide, please. At our work session on the eighteenth, we talked about, oh, excuse me, three regulatory approaches your board may pursue in response to providing this service to our community. There was, approaches are graded on a scale from fully regulated to lightly regulated. Approach A looked at a new collection program that would be provided by existing service providers or certificate holders, as we call them in Washington County. This would, to actualize this, we would take a rule change and just a program standard change. Another approach would be a limited recycling registration, which is more of an open market approach. And this would require a rule and a code change. And then a full-on exemption approach would be another open market approach, which would require a code change. Next slide, please. As noted earlier, the board direction of the work session on the eighteenth, where we unpacked these options, these approaches was to pursue approach A, to develop a new additional recycling material collection program to be made available through our current service providers and develop a temporary a rule allowing other persons to provide service. and develop a temporary rule allowing other persons to provide service so long as that material is appropriately recycled or reused until new additional material collection programs can be implemented. This approach allows for temporary services to continue until a new regulated service option is available. It maintains the ability for the county to ensure equity and community member access to these services. And it also maintains the ability for the county to manage the program elements and service rates that are charged to our community members. Next slide, please. Mr. Carr, would you like to outline the, the code language that's proposed?
So this is the proposed rule that's before the commission tonight, it's in your packet. Want to point out some elements of this rule. So one is an exception, the first part, notwithstanding any other provision of these rules. It allows for temporary collection of source-separated recyclable material from residential generators. It applies only to people who do so for compensation. It, it applies only for, for materials that are not designated or allowed to be collected by a certificate holder, that is a franchisee. The, the, it's clear here that the person must cease collection if the certificate holder is authorized. So as soon as a, someone who has a franchise can do this, then this temporary rule by its own terms would no longer apply and that we couldn't do it. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is that you can only do this if, if, if the material is appropriately recycled or reused. So something can't be collected and stored. So these are the elements of the rule for the commission to consider. And I think that's the end of our presentation.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments at this juncture?
I, I do, I, I really don't like the option, I'm going to support, support it tonight. But what I don't care about is that there's no assurance, other than hopefully that they're going to actually recycle. I mean, they could dump this stuff, there's not a market for a lot of this, we all know that. I, I like the franchise system simply because I don't like 1,000 providers chasing each other up and down the street. I think Commissioner Willie said something similar this afternoon's work session. But I think, Tom, you've done a nice job, Tom Carr, in trying to craft something. We've heard from staff about, you know, what all this means. But to me, until we can get some assurances that there is a guaranteed recycling, not just in word, but in act, some indemnification, if there's any damage to any property or any other kinds of activities, we really don't have what we really want to have. But in the meantime, I don't see any alternative. And Commissioner Trese said at one point, you know, you can't just strand people without some service. So I, I concur with her comments as well. So we are where we're at, and so that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers, any other Commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Trese.
Thank you Chair, I, thank you Commissioner Rogers for your comments. I, I want to thank the staff for working with us to try to come up with a reasonable situation here as, so we can move forward and we can, we can continue the concept of franchise and, and work toward an end goal here. So staff, I, and this is to Tom, Marnie, but also to our legal staff, thank you for your work on this.
Seeing no others wishing to comment, I will be supporting the action tonight of the temporary rules so that we can do what Mr. Aggleston illustrated on the slide about pursuing the longer-term options. It's really interesting how community members think it's just one way or the other way. And what we're trying to do is make sure right now there is a bridge so that folks do have continued service as we move forward with a fuller program available throughout our communities, which could be new entrants or not. So that's where we're at. And I think what it does is to echo some of the language that has been shared with me from community members. This does, going this route of the temporary measure and then looking at the longer term, does allow Ridwell to have a seat at the table and is a, is, is in the shorthand that one person provided is pro-green business. And what we all understand at this juncture is it's all about making sure the material gets recycled and not just collected. And right now, we're not, we have no way of knowing if the material that is being collected right now is in fact being recycled. So more for all of us to learn in the months ahead. So thank you very much, staff, as my colleagues have expressed earlier in ensuring that we're going about this eyes wide open and in response to the constituents of urban unincorporated Washington County, who we are charged to cover through our franchise agreement in addition to the rural communities. Our action here does not apply to the cities. And I know from the thousands of emails that we have received individually as Commissioners as well as our staff, that there are some folks who think that our action is throughout all of Washington County. So if you are a resident of one of our cities and you'll know that by looking at your property tax bill or contacting your city, it's not necessarily your mailing address city or your school district. Please check in with those local governments as well. So alrighty, well, at this juncture, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the temporary amendments to the solid waste and recycling administrative rule. I see a motion from Commissioner Trese, do, do we have a second? A second from Vice Chair Willie, all those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And thank you staff, I know you've already got work slated before you, but I know you're going to update that Ridwell page on our website as well. Very helpful, thanks so much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too. Alrighty, next we'll move on to our second public comment period. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and share their thoughts with us for up to five minutes each. Ms. Niola, who do we have who wants to speak with us this evening?
No one signed up to speak at the end, but I will wait if anybody wants to raise their hand. I see no hands, Chair.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, next on our agenda is just a summary of board announcements, I'll kick it off. Next Monday, we have a special meeting to appoint a new community member to the House District 30 State Representative position. That meeting will start at 3:30 in the afternoon. So please check out our meeting portal webpage for the agenda and sign up for constituent public comment there. Then we're into the month of February, whoo, that went by quickly, already one month down in the year. February 1st, Tuesday, we'll have a board meeting at 8:30 in the morning, a board work session meeting that is starting at 8:30 and then a board meeting at 10:00 and reconvene and work session. We are going to also have some work session time on Thursday, February 3rd in the morning, that meeting will start at 9:00. Then on Tuesday, February 8th, we have a board work session all day starting at 8:30. And then back to our pair of meetings, Tuesday, February 15th, which is yes, in fact, the day after President's Day weekend, we'll have a pair of meetings, work session at 8:30, board meeting at 10:00. And then for the last Tuesday of the month, the short month of February, we will have a work session just like today at 2:30 in the afternoon and a board meeting at 6:30. That's all I have for board announcements, anyone else? No, seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? We have a motion from Commissioner Trese, a second from Vice Chair Willie, all those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you Commissioners, any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thanks everyone. See you later, stay healthy, bye-bye.